Go ahead and get started?
Yeah, ma'am.
I call this meeting the February 8th regular city council meeting to order. If I could ask Councilman Mack if you would please send the information, please.
In our name, most holy and ever-acting fathers, thou art thou in thy long, Father, we come to come to you today to tell you thank you for your loving kindness and your tender mercy that you bestow upon us every morning. Father, we come to do business of the city of Hartsville, and we ask your God to come and be in our ears. Let us do what is right and good for this just and fair for every citizen and for every sector of our beloved city of Hartsville. We give your glorious name all the glory, honor, and praise, these all of the best and best men with the sun, juice, Christ, and pride.
For the citizens of God, of the United States of America, and to the Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Excellent. All right. Would anyone like to make a motion to waive the readings, a reading and approval of the minutes from January 11th regular city council meeting? Got a motion and a second. All those in favor, please indicate so by saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, you guys have it. All right. We will move on to presentations and starting with public comments. We have a couple of citizens who would like to speak. If you would come forward and state your name for the record. Please limit your comments to two minutes or less. Oh, okay. Well, Mrs. Copley. Still learning the rules here.
Yes, sir, good. Mayor Hancock and council members. I'm here with others in response to a letter, an application that we received requiring the purchase of a business license. It's my understanding that ordinance 4422 was passed in October 2021 that changes the requirements. First, let me say, I am not a business. I happen to be an individual who owns a building that is occupied by a tenant that does have a business license. If I had multiple properties that I leased, then I would buy a business license. I don't fall in that category. Most of the business license application form is not even applicable to an individual. I filed and closed my business operation. I do not have a federal or state ID tax number, and I do not file a business tax return. The property taxes, insurance, and income are all personally paid and reported that way. My building sat empty for almost four years, not being successful in being able to sell it. These expenses still occurred, ongoing to occur during this time. I am now renting it at a reduced rate because I too was tired of seeing an empty storefront in downtown Hartsville. I might add that most residential property is renting at a much higher rate and would not have sat empty for this period of time. This is not strictly about the money, about a business license. It is about taxing the same building twice. In my opinion, not a good incentive for future individuals to invest in a commercial property in the city. Should we not be trying to encourage growth by adding tax incentives and not additional taxes? I respectfully request that council amend ordinance 4422, making an exemption for a commercial property as they did for residential properties. Is it fair to have no exemptions for one commercial property and/or three exemptions for residential? I thank you for your time and consideration.
Well, thank you too for your comments.
Thank you, Ms. Caroline.
Hi, Ms. Copley. Hello.
Thank you. You sit y'all off here. I don't get to see very often now that I'm not in Darlington. You'll come back paying once. I was a little bit concerned when I got the same letter that Carol Anne did. They had no explanation before that. And I was thinking, well, now I take county property taxes on this building. But of course, the building I'm talking about is on my property on Carolina Avenue, which is the Free Medical Clinic. And they've been there for years and years since H and R lot moved down. And of course, we did not charge them any rent in the beginning. It took not long to get set up in Hartsville, of course, the main headquarters, the city of Darlington. And it just was one of those things that seems like legal rights. So I just wanted to get some explanation of what information you use. Because we are just property owners. We are not businesses in your name or not. But I would like to just have a little bit more explanation of why those of us that are just individuals renting someone property, and this is the only piece of property that I have. And in fact, it was in Walter's my name. And when he passed away, it went to me. And I decided, well, I'd be nice and I'd go and give it to the girls now so that they could have a little income on it and to know his daughter settles to my youngest. But since I'm the one in Hartsville and Jennifer is in a lot field, I'm still having to look after it and pay the bills. So I just would like a little bit more explanation and maybe some more thought about it. Is it really fair to be in paying, paying your city taxes when I pay my taxes and turn around and paying this and having a reduced rent on the building because it's like a chair? Again, I don't take that off as deduction or anything on taxes. But I would appreciate some consideration and some explanation. Thank you.
Well, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Ms. Copley. Excuse me, Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Ms. Copley.
Yes.
Is the Free Medical Clinic is a 501(c)(3) technical status operating out of that building, correct?
Yes.
Those were our only two sign-ups. Could now be an appropriate time to ask you, could you give us all some of that background and clarification on this change?
Sure. So ordinance 4422 is, as we affectionately call it, the business license warrant. But the business license warrant has been something that has been brewing in the state for almost, gosh, longer than I've been in the city government, it's been ten plus years. And what essentially, what's prompted all this is the state initiated to unify all of the codes and the schedule rates for all of the businesses across the state. They tried to get it so that would be a standard business license across the entire state, one business license, and they couldn't do it across state. But cities fought back because as cities, we have taxes income, property tax income, but we also have business license income to help offset the costs. It's about a 40-40 split, actually. That's how we keep our taxes lower. And so a lot of what this comes down to is how does the state classify a business? And one of the words that was said was income. And that is something that is something that the state looks at too. So when we talk about commercial properties, residential properties, rented properties, lessers, all those things, we look at what the state classifies as a business. And under the state statute, a commercial lesser for someone who rents a commercial property for an income is considered a business that came out. Now, there are exceptions. And those, as you work through the process with us, and we do encourage you, that letter was to let you know it's coming and to please call us and we'll work through those issues with you. But according to the state, a person who rents for an income is considered property. They consider it a business. And as such, under state statute, cities have the right to charge a fee for doing business within the state. It's not taxed. Taxing is only done by the county and the state, things like that. We do collect about a third of those property taxes that you have. So a business license fee is the fee that you pay to do business, and it typically is much lower than taxes, substantially lower than taxes. At this point, we decided, when we looked through this change with the ordinance, to look at what other cities were doing. And this is to speak directly about the five and three, going from five and three to three and one for this residential and commercial. We decided that we wanted to look at what other cities are doing to operate in the same best practices. And many cities do not grant any exceptions for anybody. So someone, as you said, for renting residential property might have an exception in City of Casey, for instance. They pay even if they rent one property. So the city council looked at it, and as we looked through it, we decided to give the exception to residential versus commercial to make that distinction as other cities do. And that's why it was put from three to one. Because as we've had conversations, we feel that a commercial property is a little different than residential. But I do encourage you, please come and talk with us through our city staff. We have already, we've processed, we sent out 190 letters for businesses. Twelve have already been exempted, seven have only signed up. So a lot of them are exempting from this because they don't quite qualify, they don't look quite meet. But we understand that you are getting income off of it. But we need to work through that too. So that's where we're at. And that was the basis for it. It was a state-led initiative, again, from years and years and years. And the state really pushed for these new schedule rates for it. And we have adopted those schedule rates as every other city, the state has. So that's where we're at. It really was kind of a... We had no choice in some aspect of it. But also, we're trying to be fair to what everyone else in the city is doing as well.
Thank you, Dana. Well, this conversation will continue. As we've been talking about earlier, we should continue to take the time and consideration. Thank you again for coming, ma'am. And with that, move into proclamations. We have three for this meeting. The first one, presenting it to anyone in particular is kind of presented to and for all of us as a city. That is, the proclamation claims February 22 as Black History Month. Mayor and city council of the city of Hartsville realize Black History Month is a special time set aside to recognize the achievements and contributions of African-Americans to the growth and success of our city, county, state, and nation. So I take great pride in presenting the proclamation for February being Black History Month. And if you could, I'll give this back to you to put it in the record. Thank you. And the second one. Ben, could I ask you to come forward? Mr. Ford.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
This proclamation is to recognize Brigadier General Jackie Thompson. And like I said before, I think you could explain this and its importance and relevance to Hartsville far better than I could. So instead of reading the text of the proclamation, if you could, please tell us the law about it.
Absolutely. Thank you. Said Brigadier Jackie Thompson, Brigadier General Jackie Thompson was a mentor of mine. He actually brought me into the United States Army Jack Corps. He was what they call a field screening officer. And so he was kind of, you feel like you pay a application, and you got to meet with this person, go to a field screening officer. And then he's the guy, he's like your gatekeeper, right? He keeps out all the bad people out of the Jack Corps, Rocky. Johnny Andrews would tell you, probably didn't do a good job with me. But nonetheless, he was my field screening officer. Later on in my active-duty career, I had the opportunity to work for General Thompson at the time, Lieutenant Colonel Thompson. And I can tell you, he is a great leader of men. He is a great attorney, and he's a great officer. He may be a better attorney, a better officer. And there is a Hartsville connection here because his wife is from Hartsville. And her family's from Hartsville. She is, her maiden name is Kenya Benjamin. And so she's now Kenya Thompson. And so we didn't put that together until kind of later in our career when I'd worked for him for several months. And so he is actually the second African-American general officer to ever be promoted to general officer in the United States Army Jack Corps. And so I felt that with his Hartsville ties and his wife's family's Hartsville ties, this would be a great opportunity to recognize him and her family on his promotion.
Absolutely.
Yes, sir.
Well, I'm honored to have the opportunity. I'll read the last line. Now, therefore, I, Casey Hancock, Mayor of the city of Hartsville in the state of South Carolina, do hereby proclaim February 8, 2022, as Brigadier General Jackie Thompson mayor. Is Ms. Thompson here? She is not.
They're DC.
We'll get them DC.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Yes, ma'am.
Yes, absolutely. Do we want to hold it up or get faded up?
The hand in the right place?
Thank you.
Thank you.
And our final proclamation is to honor the former council member Franklin Hines. Before this, I'd like to ask if we could all take a vote of silence for two seconds in remembrance of Mr. Hines. Now, honoring him, I'd like to celebrate Mr. Hines. Franklin Hines served the city of Hartsville as a council member for 21 years, made great contributions to the birth and development of the city of Hartsville. And Mr. Hines passed away on January 4th of this year, as you may know, just before January's council meeting. So we didn't have everything in order to prepare this. But it makes perfect sense to be able to make this proclamation during Black History Month. So I think it worked out well. So the mayor and council would like to extend to his family and friends their profound expressions of sympathy and shared oath. Did you stand here with me at least for the photo op? You worked alongside Mr. Hines for a number of years. I forgot to ask you to come up, I'm sorry. If you don't know, Councilman Caldwell worked, works at Hines Field Homes. So whereas the mayor and council would like to extend to his family and friends their profound expressions of sympathy and shared sense of loss in the passing of the honorable former council member Franklin Hines. Therefore, I, Casey Hancock, Mayor of the city of Hartsville in the state of South Carolina, do hereby proclaim that the city has felt a great loss and request that this proclamation be placed in the permanent minutes of the city of Hartsville. Would you like to roll photo op with him?
May he take it.
For the record. Very much. All right. Moving on, should we get an update from your screen?
Sure. So just three things for you. The first one is to please, please, please remember that your statement regarding interest filing is March 10th this year. March 13th, 30th, I just wrote a lot.
30.
30, three zero.
We have a little more time.
Yeah. I'm going to say 10, just so you know. As you know, if you don't file that, you get a call from our friendly people of the state. So I could do as well. So please, if you need any help, though, I'm going to volunteer Sharon to help you. And so she'll be very happy to assist you with anything. But please, by March 30th of this year, have that all done. Second, I'm going to actually ask our new Neptune Island director to introduce our new employee. So Adam, if you wouldn't mind.
Katie, can you come stand over? So as the new director of Neptune Island, I got the privilege to hire on our new operations manager, Katie Anderson. She'll be over our concession stands and our guest service. We are super excited to have her on board. She's already hit the ground running. Because you know, Mae's right around the corner. We've got a lot of work to do. And I'm super excited to have her on our crew and look forward to the big plans she's got coming up.
So it's Katie Anderson. Great things. We're very glad to have you. Expectations are not high, all.
Well, we mostly covered your slide, didn't we?
Working on marketing all day.
And you worked there this last summer already?
So, yeah. So actually, I spent two seasons as a season employee. Apparently, I liked it because here I am. So, yeah. It's, I'm looking forward to it. I'm excited.
Absolutely. I didn't realize that. That's all.
And the last thing is, I just want you to know, we did HPDC debate this morning. And so we got an update. And we do have, they did vote unanimously for, to approve the bottom laws which we will do approve them tonight. So I want to make sure you guys knew that happened. And then an update on the RFQ process. We're waiting on some deliverables from our architect. And as soon as we have those, we'll be able to get that RFQ started for the Canaveral project. So we are very excited about waiting, getting those and following up.
Not excited about waiting?
Not excited about waiting. But it's certainly something that's long been anticipated and excited about. So as soon as we get more update, we're going to start writing up some more meetings about that and getting that process approved. So make sure you guys have updates soon.
Is the deadline for him to deliver those things still this Friday?
It is now. So we had asked for it the past Friday, but he has some previous obligations. So he asked for it to be this Friday. So we are waiting for this Friday to have, and we're waiting, looking for the last, these are the last pieces that are market, these are marketable, to hand out to the developer to look at. So we're waiting for the final finished product, shiny and everything, about it. So we're excited.
Absolutely.
And that's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
All right. Thank you very much. Consent agenda is received as information only. So moving into unfinished business. Item number six. Mr. Mayor, if you could, read the, read it by time of presentation for the record.
Yes, sir. It is a public hearing and final reading of ordinance 4427, an ordinance amending and restating certain provisions in the city of Hartsville code within chapter 78, section 78-434. And repealing section 74 issue.
The mayor, I make a motion that we pass resolution. Public hearing. Public hearing.
All right. Thank you for your presentation. Like to open a public hearing for item number six. Ordinance 4424, if anyone would like to speak. Hearing none. I'll go ahead and close the public hearing. And now, Mr. McGee, would you like to make your motion?
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to make a motion that we pass ordinance 4427.
Thank you.
Okay. We've got a motion and a second. Is there any discussion?
Yes, sir. Just the mayor, I think ordinance 4427 is not quite ready for prime time. As I stated in the last meeting, it will allow skateboards on downtown sidewalks, will allow parked scooters on downtown sidewalks, it will allow electric bicycles on downtown sidewalks. And I think it's a hazard to the property.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Pardon me, am I too late for a comment and inclusion into this? I'm not, wasn't privy of the numbers.
Yeah, I'm not, I'm not sure what the rule is allowed. But you're welcome to come speak if you would like.
Thank you, I appreciate it, ma'am. Thank you very much. Thank you all. My wife and I moved in from the Pacific Northwest over a year ago and fell in love with Hartsville and this community. Thank you all for making us feel such a home. I'm here because I'm concerned about skateboards, bicycles, and crowding the sidewalks of downtown. I'm an avid biker. I bike just about every day. And I found plenty of bike paths, plenty of back streets, plenty of universities and places to bicycle. We don't need to crowd up the sidewalks of downtown Hartsville, this beautiful little community. Sidewalks aren't big enough. I understand they're bigger than they used to be. But if you've already got these black scooters on the corners, you've got skateboards, you've got bicycles, we're going to have to ask people when they step out of a business to look both ways before they step into a sidewalk. We're inviting people to be here to spend their money. And that's whether they live here in Hartsville or they come from outside. And a lot of us, older folks, are settling here in Hartsville and move a little slower than we used to. We crowd this place with bicycles, skateboards. I don't know if you've ever seen a skateboard when somebody falls off and it rockets ahead and breaks some ankles or glass or that sort of thing. That is something we don't need in our sidewalks. We need to be safe, slow, easy places to spend time, to visit. If you wanted to crowd those sidewalks up, stick an espresso cart out there, a hot dog stand, something like that that everybody could benefit from. If you put bicycles out there and other things, they'll be leaning up against posts or that sort of thing. Or you'll have more space for those bicycle racks to be put into. I just think it's a wrong idea. I think we can avoid downtown, that immediate, whatever we call this, six blocks of bricks.
People.
And that. And allow Hartsville to be a comfortable place to shop, a place where you're welcome to bring your family, your toddlers, let them go, let them wander the sidewalks, and not worry about being run over by bicycles and skateboards and scooters. I think it's a wonderful place. We're in love with Hartsville. We bought the first house we walked through. We're not moving. We're here to stay. And we love Hartsville itself to remain a quiet little town, the jewel that it is. I think Hartsville could do that by allowing or not allowing any further development or population on the sidewalks you've got. All right?
Thank you for some. Would you state your name for the record?
Yeah, Kim, K-I-M, Rush.
Name and address? Say, Kim Rush.
R-U-S-H.
And address, please, Mr. Rush.
400 McLeod Road. Thank you for this opportunity. Thank you.
Got a motion and a second?
More discussion? The council, we have debated this before. I don't think that passing this is immediately going to flood our sidewalks with bicycles and skateboards. I travel a lot. Many of you do too. We go to the Charleston, we go to different cities on that. And we see things on the sidewalks. And we asked for a report several months ago now of how many incidents we've had with issues or even just some of the things that were allowed, the scooters and so forth. And there just wasn't an incident that rose to the occasion to prohibit them. I think that's what we're doing here. We're legislating something out before we know what the cause and effect would be. If you look at the B1 district and you say you can't ride a bike within B1, then we put people out on the fringes of the city where it's neither as safe or as practical to get around them. We put it on map here the last time to show just how large this is. It's much more than just what we're talking about right here in these districts.
Based on that side walk.
Sure.
And also, also, with the roller skates, as the ordinance stood, you had to roller skate in the dirt. You could not roller skate on the sidewalk or street. You would actually have to roller skate in the dirt. So we took our time and looked at this ordinance and we asked for input of the incidents. And they were just not there. So I would rather see council pass it. And then if there is cause to repeal it, then we would do so. But as it stands, we discussed it and, you know, we've not gotten any information to not do it. So until we get some information that gives us reason otherwise, we've discussed it and that's the conclusion that we've come to. And if something should happen and we have to revisit it, then maybe that's the way to go.
And Ms. Mack, your comments are much appreciated. I think last month I commented I would be in favor of bikes and skateboards outside of B1. You know, I think that would be a workable alternative.
Mr. Mayor, proponent, I just don't think there's any places for somebody to ride within B1 district. We flash that it's huge, John.
But also, you know, you've got sidewalks all the way down Home Avenue too. And also bike trail all the way to Calum Gardens, you know, which is several miles. So, you know, there are other places. You've got sidewalks down Carolina, too, that kind of down.
Would this prohibit the parks committing looped bill type deal?
Special event permits?
No, no, it's not. Well, just the general idea of making Hartsville a more accessible community for biking. Would this prohibit that? That was a thing at some point.
Now, I don't know. I thought the original intent was you could ride a bicycle within B1 but not on the sidewalk. It's not totally eliminated from the B1 district. Yeah. At first, I was in agreement with Councilman Andrews. I was against skateboards and on the sidewalk. But after we discussed it, getting back with the Councilman Mack said, we must see how this thing flow out. If it generate a problem, we revisit the ordinance. Take a look at it.
Part of our 2030 plan, one pillar of that was recreation. And we talked about providing ways for recreation. Very, something very important that you mentioned. We want to be that city where you can get out and do some things. And I don't see the downside to this until there is one. It also says, it's written into the ordinance, that no person shall ride a bicycle, skateboard, or light vehicle in a careless manner. And so there would be enforcement one day if somebody is doing that. And if there are some of those instances that did come up, then we come back and revisit this. Absolutely.
Any more discussion? All right, well, all those in favor of this ordinance, please, if you pick so that so that saying aye. All those opposed?
No.
All right, thank you very much. The ordinance passes 4427. Okay, our next item on the agenda. Mr. Manager, if you wouldn't mind reading the title of 4428.
Yes, sir. It's a public hearing and final reading of ordinance 4428. An ordinance amending the City of Hartsville code by amendment Chapter 31, Article 1, Section 31-4, 31-8, Penex A-7, Article 3, Article 9, Section 5, B-1.
Thank you, sir. Like to open the public hearing. Anyone who would like to speak, please come forward, state your name and address. All right, last chance. All right, seeing none, we'll close the public hearing. We have a motion to approve the final reading and waive the complete reading of ordinance 4428.
Mr. Mayor, I so moved to approve ordinance 4428.
Thank you, Secretary. Got a motion in a second. Is there any discussion? Well, let's take a vote then. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? All right, the ayes have it. Ordinance 4428 passes, siding. Okay, moving right along onto item eight, first reading of ordinance 4429 to annex. Mr. Manager, if you would like to...
It's to annex approximately 5.11 plus or minus acres of land. Tax map number is 0360001067 and 0360001069. Located on the corner of Vero and West Luden, some highway in the city of Hartsville.
Do I have a motion to approve the first reading? The second? All right, any discussion? I just want to say, I would like to thank you for your questions and for your information helping us fill that in. All right, all those in favor of the first reading, please say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Ayes have it. First reading of ordinance 4429 passes. Resolution 22201. Mr. Manager, could you read that for us?
Yes, sir. It's acknowledging the mayor, Protem, and the city council members representing the election district of one as necessary to identify the appropriate exhibition members to the board of directors of the Hartsville Public Development Corporation and other management leaders of the day.
Really? All right. We don't take the motions or vote on resolutions, do you have? So we got a motion to approve the resolution? Hey, do I have such a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I so moved to approve Resolution 02-22-01.
Thank you, Captain.
You have a second because it loops us off.
It's only fair.
It's only fair.
All right. We have a motion to approve Resolution 22201. Is there any discussion?
Mr. Mayor, I spoke with the city manager regarding some of the language in the amended bylaws and everything. And we're going to get some further information about that.
Would you like me to expand on this, please, sir?
Yes.
So what we're talking, these are bylaws that the Hartsville Public Development Corporation actually passes. So city council, what you did, you're approving their change to their bylaws for this resolution.
But what the Mac is, this Mac's representative referencing, there is a certain line within the Hartsville Public Development Corporation bylaws that essentially the Hartsville Public Development Corporation, to back up, exists because it is a property owner of the canal district for the city. They hold the debt for the city. And when the debt is essentially released, if the property is sold, then that each, the Hartsville Public Development Corporation does not need to exist anymore because it doesn't hold any debt. So the line, though, in the, I agree, it's ambiguous. It does say that the Hartsville Public Development Corporation will exist in perpetuity. And we wanted to make sure and clarify, which is a reasonable assumption for our attorney, is to make sure that doesn't need to be amended to be more clear as to what has been happening. I think we all, we've all been explaining about what happens if the Hartsville Public Development Corporation exists to fill the development, the sale and the development of the canal district. That's what this purpose was created for. And so once that purpose is done, then it no longer needs to exist. So I think everyone's on board with that, but we might need to change the language. And I did explain, and I think there are some state statutes that clearly dictate how a public development corporation has to, how it can exist. So that's some ones very smart than me, so a lawyer can figure it out for me. And I'll pretend to understand that, so. But as we get forward, we'll get some clarification for you. So there might be some amendments that come up in the future, of course, that...
And also, it referred to Article 10, Section 3, which mentioned that if it dissolves as long as the city is in existence, and then if the city is not in existence, that concern me. So I just think we need to, I would just like to see it, what, you know, that looks like.
What's in the bylaws, continues?
Yes.
And it's something that HPDC will pick up at the next one. So I'll reach out to our attorney that represents us, city and HPDC on this, and we'll get some confirmation or clarification, rather. And then if we do need to make a change, HPDC will pick that up, all of the two new members and everyone that will bring to council for it.
Yeah.
So right now, it's basically saying in perpetuity?
It says that, but again, I think that that is, and this was again written by our attorney and his attorney, Jubilees. And if you've seen Morris's resolutions, they're quite lengthy. And I believe it references as long as that purpose is in existence. I just want to clarify that it doesn't need to continue to exist after that. There will not be a need for it. We already have another facility corporation to hold our other debt. So we will just get clarification what that means.
Because normally in a set of bylaws, you would see like kind of what the missions were or something like that.
Right.
And it doesn't have any of that language in the bylaws.
Well, it doesn't necessarily have to have a term date. If, for instance, the property is, if there's one piece of property, one parcel is owned by HPDC, it will still need to exist and hold debt. So there's no term date to that. And I believe that's what it references, but we'll just get some clarification.
Yeah, and it's like I said, it's not the date, but it doesn't mention specifically the canal district. It says other projects as well. And I understand what you're saying. And I understand, but the way it reads...
Right. The canal district is just the name, that name, that is not a legal name for that piece of property. That is, the canal district is the project name. The piece of property is referenced in that and is tied directly to those causes.
So could you keep HPDC there for other developments that may come up in the future? Or is it specifically referenced, those 10 and a half acres?
It's for that 10 and a half acres. So it dissolves when that happens. And our lawyers have been very clear on that since day one. It dissolves from those properties. It was created for that purpose to hold that, get specific debt. We, but that being said, the city has every right to create another public development corporation for another project. And as we can do, I mean, it's a very creative way the city can help offset some of the general obligation debt. All people live above board, it's a great way to do it and make sure that the city is not on the hook as to something that would go wrong. And it's a good way for taxpayers not to be accountable, so. But it does still require the city to be involved in everything like that. So absolutely does not limit us to creating a project in another part of town.
Thank you for catching that because you said everybody's clear that it was going to dissolve, but yet we're saying it's not clear.
The language, that one sentence, I do agree, it does, but again, I'm not a legal expert. And that one sentence could be dictated by state law that supersedes even that language. So we might be the clearer of those. And I believe we're already clear.
It could be fine, but in my lay mind, it is...
Absolutely, sure.
But thanks for your sharp eye, Coach. And thank you for the clarification. Need to take a vote still on that, that was discussion. Okay, all those in favor of that resolution passing indicates someone saying aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Ayes have it. Thank you all very much. All right. Executive session. Mr. Manager, would you mind reading this one to us?
Sure. A motion to enter executive session pursuant to the SC Code FOIA, Section 30-47812 for discussion of planning, commission, appointment, and discussion of matters related to the potential contrarian negotiations related to city property. Two items.
Have a motion in a second?
So moved.
Motion in a second, all those in favor?
Aye.
All those opposed? Ayes have it. We are now in the executive session. Thank you everyone for your noise to come.